Good evening and welcome to the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Education Annual Meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District. The meeting is called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move the agenda of Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Board of Education Annual Meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
A second.
Have any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Director Merschbach. Director Borcherdean.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Reesinger.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. First on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our October twenty-fifth meeting. Are there any questions regarding the minutes? All those in favor of approving as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Thank you. Next, I'll turn the meeting to Laurel for the abstract of the school election.
Thank you. This evening as part of your board packet, you have the abstract of elections as certified by the Lynn County Board of Supervisors. And the board is asked to declare that the following individuals have been elected to a four-year term. Nancy Humbles for Director of District Number Two, Jennifer Borcherdean for Director of District Number Three, and Marcy Roundtree, Director at Large. This item requires a motion and a second in the roll call vote.
Do we have a motion to approve the abstract as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Director Borcherdean.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Reesinger.
Aye.
Director Merschbach.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. Before we adjourn our annual meeting, we'd like to take a moment to recognize Director Reesinger for his service to the Cedar Rapids Community School District, and especially the Board of Directors. And thank you for stepping up and sitting on this board and filling in for Director Ann Holt. That we truly appreciate the work that you have have put in. And I'm sure, I don't know if the board members would like to say anything, but we are so thankful that you did this.
We'll miss the data analysis. That's just what I was gonna say. I think the data analysis just brings an extra level of awesome, so.
Director Reesinger. Would you like to share any parting comments?
Well, I'd like to thank the board, but more importantly, thank the citizens of Cedar Rapids for their continued feedback, as well as the staff, both here at the district office, but more importantly, the teachers and staff throughout our school district, who have just done a tremendous job over, well, a very long time, but especially the last eighteen months during difficult times. And just know that there is a great deal of support at this table for all of you. So, thank you very much.
And thank you. With no further business, our annual meeting is now adjourned, and the organizational and regular meeting will be called to order shortly. Thank you.
Till five forty, so I'm not able to start until that time. So, we'll take a five-minute break here and we'll resume again at five forty. Thank you. Okay, excuse me. The time is five forty. We're gonna go ahead and call our next meeting to order. This is the Organizational and Regular Board of Education Meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District. Today is November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and this meeting is now called to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve as presented? Is there a second?
A second.
And this is a roll call vote. Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Merschbach.
Aye.
Director Borcherdean.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Thank you. All right, at this time, the next item on our agenda is to present the oath of office and presentation of certificates to our directors-elect. At this time, if I could have Directors Humbles, Borcherdean, and Roundtree, please come forward for the oath of office. Raise your right hand, please. You Nancy Humbles, Jennifer Borcherdean, and Marcy Roundtree solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Director of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the county of Lynn, state of Iowa, as here and now after required by law. If so, please respond by saying, "I will."
I will.
Good. Board Secretary Day, I would like to nominate David Tominski for the Office of President of the Board. Thank you. Are there any other nominations? If not, then I will officially declare the nominations closed, and at this time, I would ask you to vote by roll call vote. Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Merschbach.
Aye.
Director Borcherdean.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Congratulations, Director Tominski. You've been selected to serve as the President of the Cedar Rapids School District Board of Education. Would you please come forward for the oath of office? Do you David Tominski solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Iowa, that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of Office of President of the Board of Directors of the Cedar Rapids Community School District, Iowa, county of Lynn, as here and now after required by law? If so, please respond by saying, "I will."
I will.
The chair follows.
Chair follows with me.
There we go. Here you go, David. I'll take that. Thank you very much. Welcome to the center.
Take a deep breath. I just wanna take the time to thank my fellow board members for trusting me with this responsibility. I look forward to our continued service together. I've truly enjoyed our last few years together and looking forward to the work going forward. On behalf of the board, I'd like to formally welcome Director Roundtree to the board table. Marcy, we all know we'll be better board members because of you. Your energy, your passion is very evident, and I am excited for the opportunity to serve with you, as I believe my fellow board members are as well. It'll be hard for me to stop referring to you as Madam President. I truly enjoyed having you as a mentor these past few years and the opportunity to serve with you in board leadership. I thank you for your service these past few years. I think this entire community has been through so much, and to see your leadership through the pandemic, through the derecho, through the death of a fellow board member, and so many other things. I've learned a lot from you, and I do appreciate your leadership, and I am excited that you will continue to serve on this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on with our agenda, up next is the election of a Vice President for the Board of Education. At this time, I would like to open nominations for the position of Vice President of the Board of Directors.
I nominate Cindy Garlock for a position of Vice President.
Are there any other nominations? If not, I officially declare nominations closed.
This is a roll call vote. Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Merschbach. Director Borcherdean.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
President Tominski.
Aye. Congratulations, Director, uh-uh, Director Garlock. You have been elected to the, to serve as the Vice President of the Cedar Rapids Board of Education. Please come forward for the oath of office.
Garlock, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State, faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Directors of the Cedar Rapids Community School District, county of Lynn, state of Iowa, as here and now after required by law. If so, please respond by saying, "I will."
I will.
Laurel, do you have anything to report about the annual conflict of interest statements?
The only thing I would say in your board packet, this is an information item, tomorrow sometime during the day, you will be receiving an email from our office support person, Heather Marner, and she will be sending you several pieces of information, one which will be a conflict of interest statement, which will be submitted electronically. So, if you would please keep your eyes out for that and submit that as soon as possible, I'd appreciate it.
We would now move to hear from Superintendent Bush for her report, followed by any board reports.
Thank you, President Tominski, and good evening, Board of Directors, and welcome. Director Roundtree, so glad to have you onboard and excited to give a few updates. These might be things that you may already know about, but fun to certainly celebrate great things happening in our district. So, last week, we celebrated Veterans' Day and truly tried to honor all those who've served presently and in the past. We continue that celebration, and I would like to, with your permission, President Tominski, if we have any veterans here this evening, if you wouldn't mind standing, and we'd like to give you thanks for serving our country. Thank you very much. Thank you. And if you have a family member, past or present, who have served our country, we too thank you, families, for your continued support, not only of your family member, but also for all those who serve our country. We had celebrations throughout our district through tributes, music, letters to veterans, and even virtual connections to those currently serving our country. And so, this is just a picture at a local high V. Grantwood Elementary students sang some tribute songs to our local veterans. And so, thank you also to our educators for making it so important within our classrooms and throughout our schools to recognize the importance of what eleven eleven really means in our country. In addition to that, we have a transition time right now happening. We have exited from our fall activities and into our winter activities. And so, just a congratulations sincerely to all those participants, coaches, and sponsors from our fall activities. Right now, we're in the season of Allstate, so congratulations to those nominated for that role. Fall sports, we had tremendous seasons throughout our district, including just trying to really elevate this year and in a new way. And so, from our middle schools being back in session to great football seasons, to great volleyball seasons, just a lot of wonderful things happening with sports throughout the fall, cross-country out there running, and they had a nice warm season, I must say, to run outside. So, lots of great things happening, of course, throughout the fall. And then some amazing fall shows that happened, both in theater and in music, and our clubs and competitions, just a lot of wonderful things that happened throughout August, September, and October. And now, as we transition into the winter months, as you can see, we've got basketball underway. That practice already started and is well, well through, almost we're getting ready to for our first competitions here. So, that's well into season, wrestling, and of course, lots of music things continue to happen throughout those months as well. So, just wanna encourage our folks to get out there and continue to support the winter activities too. And then finally, in the season of Thanksgiving, we are entering that season, which will be next week, and just want to thank everyone for their continued support of our district. And so, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and that's all I have for you. President Tominski, I'll hand it back to you.
Awesome. Thank you for the report, Superintendent. Do we have any board reports? Seeing none, moving on to addressing the board on our agenda, communications, delegations, and petitions. Board Secretary Day, do we have any speakers registered to address the board this evening?
Yes, we have registrations for this evening.
Before we hear from those who have requested to address the board, I'd like to remind you to please state your name and address for the, for the record when called. You'll be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer and inform you when your time is up. In order to abide by the open meetings law, I'd like to remind our speakers that there will be no dialogue between the board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individuals speaking. We have received all requests and will listen to all of them in the order they were received. We ask that the speakers and audience members refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. Laurel, can you call, please, first, please call our first speaker.
Our first speaker this evening is Craig Sealy, and Craig is here to address the board on ideologies, agendas, sources, and teaching methods.
Thank you, Honorable School Board and the new member, Marcy Roundtree.
Thank you.
I would like to start out by making you understand where I'm coming from. I usually watch national news. I don't watch very much local news. So, I'm getting input from what's going on all over this country and this world. So, the good Lord guided me to another scripture to prove even more about our sourcing, sourcing almost sounds like sorcerer, what we choose for sources for our teaching methods, and it's Colossians two, three. And it says, "All the fullness of the treasures of wisdom and knowledge are hidden in the triune God of the Bible, the Creator, infathomable Creator of the universe." So, our first textbook again went from our founding fathers was the Bible. What has happened? And is it proving successful? Now, there is a quote from a very wise person that says that America tries everything first, and then they do the right thing. Now, that was possibly what, how America reacted before the Second World War, and that was a quote by Winston Churchill. But the trouble is, are we in that same boat? Are we trying everything else first? And then, finally figuring, figuring out that it isn't working, and then are we gonna do the right thing? You know, we, our, our country, our world is so divided, and I always wonder if that's caused by win no matter what, whatever it takes, win at all cost. And when, when does that start? Maybe when our children get on their first teams and go and evolve to better and better teams, and they're taught that. We just have this ridiculous mentality in this country, in this world, win at all cost, no matter who it hurts, no matter how many people it hurts. And sometimes, the entities that are causing this are so big, they just, and they have so much money involved, they just can't help themselves. So, I'm just giving you some of the hypotheses that cross my mind. I know one side always talk about democracies. We are not a democracy. Democracies are all about majority vote, which can run into mob rule, which can become, end up becoming tyranny. We are a constitutional republic, which means that we are more representative of the people because of the way we function with electoral college. Every state has two senators, and then the representatives are dependent on how many, the population of each state. So, when you hear democracies, they trace democracies. They have ruined nations because after it turns into mob rule, it can turn into anarchy. So, we've got to really start thinking the ramifications of the way that we are functioning. I can give you an example, and I'll complete it next week. I have a good friend by the name of Mr. Miller, and he had two sons, and the Kennedy varsity basketball coach let it be known that nobody from the West Side was good enough to play on the Kennedy varsity basketball team. When I was in Jefferson School, I was told that I was not college material. I've gone to seven different colleges. I have two degrees.
Excuse me, Mr. Sealy, your time is up. Thank you.
Why do we allow things like that to happen? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lawrence Winkowski. Lawrence is representing Forty-Second and Edgewood Save Our Neighborhood. He's here to talk with you about elections, volunteering, and Forty-Second and Edgewood.
Lawrence Winkowski, Forty-two, Thirty-four, Morel Road Northeast. Did you ever notice that every other year- Did you ever notice that every other year, usually in September or that, you start seeing people that you have no idea who they are in the back of our room? Then all of a sudden, you will see them on TV or in the newspaper and say, hey, they're running for school board. And that. And then election comes and they don't get the most votes. But it's not until they quit, that's at the point in which they lose. There's so many opportunities for these people to continue. And, you know, you're much better off being on this side of the podium than you are being on that side of the podium. I get to come here every meeting. I get five minutes of uninterrupted time. I don't get five minutes uninterrupted time at home. And that. And I can just talk about whatever I want. You cannot do that. So, and you, you know, at least what I do is give people an opportunity to think about things, I hope. And that. So, but, you know, so I encourage those people to come back. Because there are other opportunities, which I will talk about in the morning, or in a minute. But the whole thing is that with this, you know, we have these elections, which aren't perfect, but I thank those people who come out and respect what our veterans have given to us, the opportunity to vote. And that, and they will not necessarily be all perfect elections. Now, as for these people to volunteer, we have all these committees. And I got a pet peeve with committees. We have all these people who say, yeah, I want to be on this committee. And you never see them. You'll see them at one meeting. I tried to be on a city committee once, couldn't get on it. But one of the people on there, they went to one out of six meetings. So, and the people who run these committees, they are too nice or too busy to kick somebody's, some of these people and just say, hey, sorry, you're not doing your job. And that. So, just wanted to mention that. So, people, please be respectful if you're, if you take the commitment to follow through with it. Now, let's talk 42nd and Edgewood. 42nd and Edgewood is where the Transamerica facility used to be that was ripped down, and now they are trying to redevelop it. However, they don't care what they put in there. They just care about making money. The plans, if you look at them, and you can go to the City Planning Commission, I think there's, it's their site, but one of the committees that they have it. And if you look at it, they have a bunch of lots along Edgewood, and then they got two big lots. Well, it is not going to be the same neighborhood if they put in another strip mall or do what they want to do. Hunter Companies, which also developed the High V, and also Fleet Farm on the other side, well, look what they did with their development. They totally screwed up Edgewood Road north of 100. It is a nightmare driving that. And it's like a piecemeal. And that, there's no, you know, so I am really concerned with this. And I'm concerned for a couple of reasons. One is what they put in there, it's going to affect home values, or very well could be. And they put a strip mall in there, my house value goes down. I don't want that to happen. Second thing is traffic. We have students from Kennedy High School who drive through that intersection every day. We, there are students from Xavier High School who drive through that intersection every day. If there is more traffic, it's going to make it more dangerous for those students. And so, that is not a good thing. So, I, you know, there are so many things I can say, but if you go to the Facebook's page for 42nd and Edgewood Development and see what they have, you will see what, you can see what it's about. There's a sample form to sign a petition to send it to the city. Because we need support from across the city. We got to stop developers from ruling our community and actually controlling the community. The future of our community and the future of the community should be ours. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Russell Hotchkiss. He is here to speak about mask mandate and bioweapon advocacy.
Russell Hotchkiss, 3341 Chester Road, Cedar Rapids, GT 411. I presume you all got my email last night? Been sending them to you frequently? Have all that information, studies in there that just seem to keep getting ignored. A doctor friend of mine sent me this yesterday, which I didn't forward it on to you. I doubt that any of you read it, but we're going to go with it anyway. According to the CDC, the following is true, children under age 18. There's approximately 74 million children in the United States as of October 23rd, 2021. Only 558 children under the age of 18 had died involving COVID. Dividing 558 into 74 million is .00075%. Or one death in every 132,616 children for the population as a whole. In that same period of time, 60,065 children died from all causes. That means that children that died from COVID-19 account for less than 1%. I'm not sure what you people are doing. It had to come out from a Freedom of Information Act, but the CDC finally admitted on Friday that it doesn't transfer or transmit the way that you claim that they do. If you have natural immunity, which means you had COVID and you survived, which is a 99.98% survivability rate amongst people, 99.998% of children. So, they don't die from it. Natural immunity, they had to admit that it doesn't spread it. So, why they're continuing to mask our children is beyond me. Because Miss Psychology down there doesn't want to seem to tell you people what's going on with our kids. You advocated for the bioweapon jab. Did you actually read that thing you put out from Pfizer? It's on your website. Says the duration of protection against COVID-19 is currently unknown. Says the vaccine has shown to prevent COVID-19. That's not true. I know plenty of people that had the jab, still got COVID. So, that's not a true statement by Pfizer. It doesn't even last six months. It's been proven. There are boosters. Pfizer only has a 52% efficacy rate, Moderna 42%, Johnson &amp; Johnson's only 13%. However, if you actually look at all the side effects, there's 29 of them listed there. Difficulty breathing, swelling of the face and throat, fast heartbeat, bad rash, dizziness and weakness, chest pain, shortness of breath, feelings of having a fast beating, fluttering, or pounding heart, severe allergic reactions, non-severe allergic reactions such as a rash, itching hives and swelling of the face, myocarditis, pericarditis, injection of pain, sight pain, tiredness, headache. You know what they forgot to mention? Heart attacks, blood clots, strokes, death. There's been over 18,000 people that bears is reported due to the jab. Adverse reactions are over 800,000 now. But yet, COVID doesn't affect kids. That's been proven. Here's what they did find on the masks that you mask them with eight hours a day. Pneumonia, tuberculosis, meningitis, septic, amoebic and esophagealitis, pneumonia, bloodstream infections, food poisoning, which is E. coli, Lyme disease, which is Borrealis, Diptheria, Legionnaires' disease, meningitis, septic. You people baffle me. You totally baffle me. I sent you all the studies to, which I'm having a problem at the moment finding them. All the things that Miss Psychology down there should be telling you. That's what happens when you got so much paper and so many damn studies. Anyway, trouble paying attention, shortness of breath, dizziness, headaches, lack of concentration. It affects their psyche. I also found out you guys are being investigated by the Department of Justice because you're throwing kids in, you know, rooms, isolating them for pretty much any reason. You don't think you're affecting their psyche? You're absolutely crazy if you don't. That woman right there knows it. She has a psychology degree with an emphasis in child development. It's been proven that they actually lack development. They regress when you mask them all day long. That's why they did it to slaves back in the day. Muslims used to do it all the time. You guys baffle me. What is it going to take to cut our kids loose? Cut them loose.
Our next speaker is Dan Bushman. Dan is here to speak about masks and LBA.
Hi, Dan Bushman, 3744 Rogers Road, Northwest. I guess part of, I just wanted to come in and kind of back up. I was here a while back and, and I spoke about the school resource officer thing. And I just wanted to let you guys know that I and a lot of my friends, I own a business and a lot of friends that are in business, and we're not very much in favor of the mask mandates in the schools. And we're really looking forward to getting kids unmasked and getting them out. I, I do think there are a lot of adverse effects to masks. It seems like there's plenty of studies out there that show that. I know that COVID is a real thing or whatever, and, and we're dealing with that. But I, I just feel like the effects, the negative effects of what we're doing to people are not being properly weighted. And any kind of analysis, I think you really need to see how you're weighting both sides of that, you know, in a multivariate analysis. The weighting of your variables is extremely important. So, I think that another thing that worries us is that the vaccinations and stuff that are coming for kids. I just don't want to see my kids having to make a choice between going to public school or government school, sorry, or getting a vaccination. I do believe that, you know, possibly, there's possibly some, some good effects for vaccinations if you have certain comorbidities or if you're at a certain age or something. But definitely don't want to see my kids being made to take a vaccination when there's the billions of dollars in studies that are needed have not been done. We don't know what the future cause or risk of cancer is going to be, reproductiveity. I saw a study out of Japan where they took 1,000 mice and they gave them all the vaccination. Within 17 days, there was, or, sorry, within two weeks, there was a 17% reduction in reproductive rate in the one study out of Japan. That, that just worries me. You know, my kids want to have kids someday. I, we don't know. We, there's a lot of unknowns. Everybody, everybody's focusing on what we think we know. And it seems like every day, there's another study or another change to whatever coming out to say, oh, this isn't working as well as we thought it was. This isn't as beneficial as we thought it was. And I, I'm seeing it. And, you know, I, I'm not, you know, I'm not in the news cycle all the time. So, I'm hoping that you guys are starting to see some things and question some things. I think we need to question everything. Albert Einstein said that one time, and I, I think that's probably a huge, hugely important factor, that we, we need to always question what's really being shoved at us. Now, I don't want you to think that I'm anti-vaccination or anything. I, I've been vaccinated myself, not from COVID, but other things. And, and I believe they're a good, a good thing to do. But this, our mRNA technology is something completely different. We don't know what it could do and what it is. So, it makes me nervous. Another thing, I know that it's coming to the year end, and different people have said a few things about donating different things towards Cedar Rapids Schools or something like that. And I've got a friend named Al Bannon that runs a thing called Leaders, Believers, and Achievers. And I get together with Al every year, and, and I try to point some stuff his way from some other colleagues of mine. So, if you guys have anybody that's looking to donate money, I would definitely point them towards Al, towards Leaders, Believers, and Achievers. He's got a program that is just absolutely out of this world. I mean, the, what he does for personal accountability and having kids sign contracts, he really does develop, I think, young kids into adults or, you know, earlier than what the school system would do alone, you know? So, I, I feel like he does a heck of a job. So, I just wanted to kind of put in for Al, too, because I haven't seen him come to a meeting or whatever. So, all right, thanks.
Our final speaker this evening is Melissa Duffield.
It's interesting that we've witnessed you today holding up your hand and swearing to uphold the United States Constitution. On November 12th, which was just last week, I hope you all know that the United States Fifth Court, Circuit Court of Appeals sided with Utah and 26 other states in our United States of America, agreeing that this is an unlawful reach to the rights of citizens in the United States. That would also make you all unlawful. The rights of kids and their parents you have sworn to uphold, and the courts are not agreeing with you. This is just the beginning. And let's be clear, you are not the majority. You've had over and over again, members of this community that have come in and spoken. And I work with 150 families in the community. And I don't have people in my practices with masks. The evidence is mounting against you, and you are running out of time to make the right choice. There will be consequences if you don't stop. You might not think so because you might have people telling you otherwise. But I promise you, there will be lawful consequences. Masks equal abuse. I've already spoken on this before. Vaccines also have caused a historical amount of harm, the scale which we have yet to see fully in the United States. Nobody should be required to take something that has a side effect listed that includes permanent damage and death. You know this. You sent out the sheet. You basically are going to try to claim down the road that the parents were given warnings. But in fact, you've been given warnings. Don't believe the sheet? That's fine, if you guys just want to not read. But the evidence is real, really, really, really well. Professional athletes are dropping like flies. Jeremy Charade, a professional tennis player, has ended his career due to the side effects he suffered taking the COVID shot to be able to go to the Olympics. He's 34 years old and in the prime of his life. Quote, "I have serious problems. I wish I never got vaccinated." We are headed towards requiring this for kids, and we see you. We see you. You are creating mandates that cause harm with zero choice in order to get a basic human right, which is their education. This is wrong. You are doing an experimental test on children, but you are a part of it. You are really willing to say, no worries, just give it to them and let's see what happens, just like you are with the masks? You're willing to sacrifice children, our most precious commodity in our United States of America? You won't be able to hide that this is happening because there's even websites dedicated to this. Covidvaccinevictims.com is a sliver of thousands, thousands who have died from this vaccine. And I'm going to take the rest of my time to read some of their names to you, because the media won't. Erica K. Dar. She was 40 years old. Fernanda Catoquina. He was 50 years old. Cheryl Hill, 22 years old. Dr. Harney Harnarni, 20 years old. Emma Tandy, 38 years old. Benjamin Goodman, 32 years old. Sarah Hollup, 40 years old. Sandro Taranati, 57 years old. Monica Vasquez, 53 years old. Roy Gregory, 72 years old. Midwin Charles, 47 years old. Dr. Jasar Henry, 27 years old. Desiree Penrod, 25 years old. 61-year-old Christina Galio, Venezuela Galio, 37 years old. And I apologize to these poor souls as I murder their names. But a pharmaceutical company has murdered them. Rachel McKenny, 35 years old, mother of four. Are you okay with giving it to children when we have adults that are dying? Because that, we're not going to stand by and watch El Al. We will not. I'm done. Look them up.
Thank you. And you are going to get your guys' evidence, too, by the way.
That ends all public comment received by the deadline for the evening. Our next meeting on December 13th will be another opportunity for public comment. Our next meeting on December 13th will be another opportunity for public comment. We will now move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that a board member would like to pull for comment, question, or separate vote? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there further discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Merschprach?
Aye.
Shadine?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
President Tominski?
Aye.
The next item is an update from Superintendent Bush on health and safety mitigation.
Thank you, President Tominski, and thank you, Justin, for pulling up our slides. Just an update in regards to some of the questions that were surfaced today in regards to mask mitigations as well as vaccinations, as well as some questions about the OSHA requirements as it relates to employees as well. So this has been a metric table that we have had on our COVID-19 website page. And so this particular table reviews the factors, the metrics, and our current state. So I'll review that right now. And then the question has become, since our younger children have had access to vaccination, if parents choose that path for their kids, what might that mean? As some other districts have made some decisions in regards to access to vaccinations and what that meant to their masking requirements within their district. So our district has received some questions around that as well. So the four metric areas currently where we sit, and this is as of Friday's update, is the Lynn County seven-day positivity rate is currently at 13%. That would be meeting our metric as a district for mask removal. Lynn County transmission level is still at the epidemic level. But our positivity rate of our cases within our district are still around, I think it was 42 on Friday, and that includes staff and students. We certainly have fewer staff members than students with positivity rate at this point in time. It's also certainly below our 2% rate, so it's less than 1%. So we meet that metric as well. And then finally, the 0-17 age group is at 16% in Lynn County. And that has remained steady for the past couple of weeks. And so it was on the rise, but as we could see, it went from 16% to 16%. The hope is that we start to see that reduce. And that's certainly our age group that we want to continue to pay attention to for the children whom we serve. And so in regards to vaccinations, Lynn County Public Health was looking for additional, for additional locations. We are hosting clinics within our district for access for families who are choosing to get access for their kids. That does require parents to be present. And we are just providing the site locations for those Lynn County clinics. And that will be during the week of November 29th. So the concern or some of the questions that have surfaced to the district are, does that mean that we are requiring vaccinations? Absolutely not. This is just the locations in which we're offering to host this in collaboration with Lynn County Public Health. And then finally, some questions have surfaced around the OSHA requirements. And this was in regards to mandates and support for, or communication, I should say, for employers and what they would require. At this point in time, we as a district are pausing for more information to come. We've gotten some initial guidance from both the Iowa Association of School Boards, school administrators of Iowa, as well as, I would say, the largest practicing law firms for educators within the state around these requirements. However, this week, there are additional things happening within our nation that may change the scope of the OSHA requirements. And so we are just going to press pause right now until we get that further guidance. I imagine that within the next week, we will all have more guidance around this. But as decisions get made, even on a national lens, that certainly could apply to Iowa. So some of the questions that I've received from our employees around this is, what is the percentage currently that we have of our employees who are vaccinated? And we are better than 75% of our employees are vaccinated. Some of our new employees, we don't have necessarily all of their data. But from our vaccination clinics that we offered to employees in the spring, it was more than 75% of our employees participated in those. But we had additional employees who got vaccinated outside of our school district. So to our knowledge, it's better than 75%. So as this becomes more clarified as we move forward, we certainly will share that information with absolutely our employees, but also with the board and our community as people will be interested as this moves forward. Some districts have communicated already what they believe the requirements will be. But we're just not sure that requirement is actually going to be solidified. So we're pausing until we know that to be true. So at this point in time, I'm going to stop there and certainly open this up for questions and discussion amongst the board.
Thank you for that update. I'll defer to my fellow board members with any questions.
I just wanted to, you know, and all the talk about masking, I think most everyone up here would love to see a world where kids don't have to wear masks in schools.
They don't?
Just do it.
No.
What conversations have you had with either the cities or the county in terms of what they're doing? Because we're asking a lot from kids to come in. You know, my kids wear masks to school every day and I know that's asking a lot for them as a parent. What can we ask from the rest of the community members to do their part to get those numbers down? Because we know that if there's less community transmission, there'll be less transmission in our schools. And so just have you had any conversations and what, what can we do to reach out to them and say, hey, keep people, you know, as safe as possible? Encourage people to be safe, encourage people to get vaccinated so our kids don't have to bear the special burden of masking that not everybody has to bear?
Please, please stop being disruptive. Call this meeting to order. The question...
This came from the CDC. They don't die from it, people.
Of the board. This is the board's meeting. You've had certainly public comment. This is the board's discussion at this point in time. So they're just, this is not an interactive part of the meeting. This is the board's discussion. So to answer your question, at this point in time, the Lynn County transmission rate is at 16%. Our district has less than 1% of a positivity rate. What we haven't necessarily been given is where all of the other transmissions are from that population of 0-17, which is throughout the, that's entire county transmission rate. So what's hard to say is where exactly students may or may not be contracting this. So absolutely, we can continue to support the end message as much as possible with Lynn County. But we aren't necessarily, from, from what I understand at this point in time, the county nor the city are mandating at this point in time. And so that would be certainly continued discussion for our board. Now, as vaccinations become more available, what was formally communicated in the spring was if from adult vaccinations, when 50% are the better of a community, and let's just say that would be this particular building of employees, if 50% or better of the employees within this building were vaccinated, then that is a mitigation effort where masks would not have to be required. That was also pre-Delta variant. So what we don't have is additional guidance around the increased positivity rate spread for the most recent activity in regards to COVID-19 and what those mitigation efforts might be. If you think about a community or a percentage or a population of a community being vaccinated.
I have a follow-up on that 50% number. Because I think it was back in August when we were first kind of talking about what we could and couldn't do around masking. That's when we were saying we recommended masking. And that was based on, I think, the CDC recommendation that even vaccinated individuals with the Delta variant, which was relatively new at that time, even vaccinated individuals, they were saying indoors should wear masks. And so I don't know if that's where we want to go, you know, moving forward. But I was just looking at that and we're still in that high transmission state that we were at and approaching very fast and got to in August.
This is a board discuss, please... The public comment.
Can I continue?
How many more shootings do we have to have in our community?
When we look at the... When we look at the COVID positivity percentage on our four metrics, we're in the schools.
Board members, I remind you, the board business may not be discussed if there is a quorum present. When we return, we expect to continue the regular meeting without disruption.
My kid wants to see my classmates faces. Yes, it does! I'm going to tell you more, five minutes is enough. I wouldn't hurt my kid. Tell them, George, tell them the psychological effects. You know them.
You're acting like impet and it's time to fall down. You are.
No, when I'm not hurt, I'm going to make sure I'm hurt.
If we could have everyone please take their seats.
We have two SBRC requests. I will move on to the annual request for the SBRC for modified allowable growth for limited English learner access program costs, as well as an additional for allowable growth for unfunded English language learning costs in open enrollment students not included in previous year's enrollment. Any questions for Dave? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Next on our agenda is the resolution to schedule a public hearing for the issuance of school infrastructure sales and services and use tax revenue refunding bonds. Are there any questions for Dave? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Director Merschprach? Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
President Tominski?
Last on our agenda is a presentation for CRCSD's Magnet School Programming. Deputy Superintendent Quaker will introduce our presenters.
Good evening, Board of Directors, and thanks for the opportunity for us to present a really high-level view of our Magnet School program tonight. Tonight, we're going to cover a little bit of the strategic plan connections. We're also going to talk about the purposes and theory of action behind our Magnet Schools. Also talk about a grant opportunity. And then lastly, we're going to talk about the 9-10 Magnet... And then lastly, we're going to talk about the nine, 10 Magnet High School and potential expansion. Executive Director Adam Zimmerman is going to talk about the grant opportunity and Executive Director Pickering is going to talk about the Magnet High School. So when you look at our strategic plan, we're going to focus on the student learning piece and if you look under the purpose, it's that high quality instruction, academic, social, and emotional learning. And our Magnet programming hits on all of those. If you look under the strategies, the last one is Magnet Schools and Innovative Programs and really when you look at our strategic plan system indicators, Magnet Schools touches on the focus of equity, also student achievement of growth and proficiency, and really is about graduation rates, right? Because we want our kids to have all kinds of opportunities and what works for each of them within our system. So the federal purposes of Magnet Programs are tied into our Magnet Programs as well, improve student achievement, close opportunity gaps for students, and also desegregate schools, so reduce that minority group isolation that happens within school systems. So here is our theory of action and I think some of the key pieces, I'm not going to go into all of this, but really I want to talk a little bit about, we are doing a reset. And when I say a reset, we've been getting our administrators together and those that oversee the Magnet Program and really talking about what is the focus of those programs? What is the purpose of those programs and what are the goals of the programs in place? So currently, that vision of every student is striving academically and also that, of course, every learner future already is our vision for our entire system. And that's again why we have Magnet Schools to help assist us with making sure all students can be successful within our system. If you look again under the theory of action, the if then statement, if we create and support innovative educational experiences that foster creativity, promote personalized learning, et cetera, we are going to improve student outcomes and decrease that racial and economic disparity that occurs within systems. Currently, we have five Magnet Schools within our system. We have three elementaries and we have two middle schools. We also have two innovative pilot programs that are both at elementary schools within our system. And this would be looking at developing and creating an additional one. So here is some of the work. Again, we've had a few meetings. We have our next one on Friday. It's a great opportunity to really connect of what was the purpose of the Magnet Programs, what are our academic results? Are we meeting our academic results and do we need to make any shifts? So these are some of the posters of the work that that team has been doing. Here's another set. We've met a few times. So in addition to that, again, we've been meeting and having conversations about a grant opportunity. I'm going to pass it to Mr. Zimmerman to talk about. And then Executive Director Trace Pickering is going to talk about the nine, 10 potential opportunity for students.
Good evening, Board members. We couldn't be more excited about this work and truly bringing clarity to a system that's developed over the last seven years. And it started with Trace and it's really great to have him back on, on the team to help us provide clarity in this moment after some disruptions with COVID and not being in school. So I'm here to talk about the grant application that we are working towards. It is a federal grant. It's the Magnet School Assistant Program Grant. We've applied for it once before and not received it, but we think we're really well positioned this time to do so. It's a grant that comes around every five years. It's between $10 and $14 million and there's typically between 10 and 12 winners nationally. The timeline this year will be short, but we're excited about the preparation work we're doing now to put a really strong application in. It'll be, the notice of applicants will come out in January and then March will submit and then next September, we'll be able to hopefully celebrate with all of you the awarded grant. So we're really excited about the opportunity. The purposes, as Deputy Superintendent was talking about, are going to student achievement, improving student achievement, and indeed segregating our schools further. There are six kind of sub-bulleted priorities that are set by the administration. We are really excited about our positioning for a couple reasons. One, we're excited this year to go do the work of revising the good work that's already been happening and saying, hey, how do we put all of these good ideas in our Magnet Schools on steroids? And looking for areas of opportunity to say, hey, this, this was something we thought was going to work, but now we know better and so we're going to try something new. So we're excited about the existing work. But secondly, one of the big knocks in our last application was that we didn't have a PK-12 Magnet Pipeline. So we had a gap between our eighth graders and our 11th and 12th graders. And so I'm going to hand it over to Executive Director Pickering to talk about a nine, 10 concept that we couldn't be more excited about the community coming together and helping design this and really getting in to the nuts and bolts of this new school opportunity. So Trace, I'll let you explain.
All right, thank you. I was asked this summer to kind of help lead an effort to look at what is the possibility of having a high school magnet to add to our K8 mix? And which button did I push? Clearly not the one I did. Justin, I'm technologically illiterate. Thank you, all right. So towards the high school magnet, so why now? I think Adam really hit the, hit the main points, but we've had seven years of Magnet Schools at K8. We have more and more families asking what are the options and possibilities for high school? The ratio and the pandemic certainly accelerated interest for parents for more options and possibilities for kids. The ESER funds are going to provide us an opportunity to put some dollars behind this in ways perhaps we wouldn't have been able to before. And then we have nine years of learning and experience with this. Our work at Iowa Big, the Blend Ed Program, and what the K8 Magnet Schools have all taught us really sets us up nicely, I think, to, to make a move on this. So what's the, been the process and the progress? In August and September, a concept team of community members met to explore and develop a vision for this high school magnet and connect it to our profile of a graduate. To explore what we call 30,000-foot design ideas, just try to develop some ideas and generate some excitement. And then through that, creating personas. And so we're developing personas now that would help our community and parents see this is what a day in the life or a week in the life of a student at this Magnet School might look like. And then obviously continue to sharing with you and moving that forward. This very quickly, I won't read all the names, but this was the concept team that met in August and September. Try to find a nice representation of folks across our community. So what did we work on? First thing we did is we call black blank sheet design. Really, what, what outcomes are we looking for for a high school? What could a high school deliver a Magnet School? And so you can see the concept team, their ideas, strong communicators, creative thinkers, members of a community, self growers, financially literate and so forth, mapped nicely back to our profile of a graduate. So we felt like, yes, we're, our profile and what our community is asking for continues to be lined up nicely. So what are some design ideas that they came up with? So basically, if we were going to make these things happen in a school, what kind of designs could we put in place that would help ensure that this happened? Their first idea rooted in deep relationships and supportive community, keeping the group small so that the teachers and the students and the parents all knew each other very well and understood what the kids were wanting to have happen and their life goals were and all those kind of things. The second was a competencies and standards matrix that's owned by the learner. All right, so for example, imagine some sort of matrix with the standards and the competencies you need to graduate high school. Your job as a learner is, as you have experiences and learn content academics that you check your standards off as you demonstrate them and when your matrix is complete, you graduate. For some kids, that might be two and a half years. For other kids, that might be four and a half years. But it would help us ensure that the kids had a strong voice and choice, right, for, for how they dealt with that, things that they wanted to learn. The third was personalized, relevant, and contextualized learning experiences. Five dollar words, but essentially what, what it, what it means, some of the ideas that came, came out is looking at three things that kids would experience in this school. The first would be community facing projects. So much like Iowa Big and Blend Ed do, finding projects in our community, government, nonprofit, for-profit projects so our kids could practice and hone their 21st century employability skills and give back to community. Research is pretty strong that high school kids need to feel like they're making a contribution of something bigger than themselves. And so that would give them that opportunity. Learning discoveries is an interesting concept. So think rather than students taking Algebra I or US History, they would be in learning discoveries around relevant topics of interest for the kids, right? A quick example, let's say you had a group of students who had watched the Netflix show Queen's Gambit. I realize that's, that's probably too old for, you know, that happened a year ago, you know? But, you know, so you hear kids in the school buzzing about watching the Queen's Gambit on Netflix. Us, English teacher, math teacher, psychology teacher could all get together and go, hey, we have an opportunity to offer a short discovery, three weeks, four weeks long. It would meet all these standards in these different content areas and it's dealing with a topic our kids are talking about. Kids could choose to be in that discovery and they could talk about the, the history of that time period and the mathematics behind chess. They could create a chess tournament for their school if they wanted, those kind of things. So learning discoveries would be really geared towards things that kids are interested in and that would, would connect them and get them interested. And the third area for the personalized side is concentrations. So let's say we have a, a young person who's a junior and they know they're going to be an electrician. That's what they want to do. We would jump into action and all of their science would be focused on electrical concepts and the science behind electricity, their math, their trigonometry, their geometry, the things that they would need to pass the, the variety of tests to become an electrician. The English, learning the vocabulary, learning how to read technical manuals related to electricity. So this school could spring into action and really customize those experiences while the kids are still meeting their standards. So that was one of their ideas there. A couple more, internships and job shadows. Every, every student in the Magnet School would have that opportunity to go out and see businesses in our community and understand all the, all the options and all the career possibilities that exist in our city and try some of them on before they, the way they cited, that's what they wanted to do. Outside of school learning validation, so as students would learn things from outside the school, they could bring it in and demonstrate that they've learned standards through Boy Scouts or some, you know, some vacation or a camp they went to or whatever it might be. So those are just some of the design ideas. The, the next big task is to get some, get the wheels closer to the ground. What does this look like? What would a day look like? How would we organize it? We need to get word out to parents that this is going to be an option and start gauging interest. As Nicole mentioned, we've talked about maybe starting with ninth and 10th graders. So we can start this school small, get it right, and then grow it to juniors and seniors. Because honestly, our juniors and seniors do have Iowa Big as an option, which is a similar but not exactly the same kind of model. So that's where we're at. We just had our first design team meeting on Friday with a team trying to dive into these things and figure out what that's going to look like. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I will look to my board members, see if they have any questions.
I have a question. So for the, will there be additional teacher certification or training that will be needed to be able to work in these Magnet Schools? And if so, what will the district do to support that?
For the high school, it would be a similar licensure that we have now in the core areas and any other area we wanted to offer. The real difference in the, I think the Magnet School is the professional development around this new kind of model and really exploring together what this is going to look like and what the responsibility of the teacher is and the students and what role do parents play in helping, helping us learn what, what they want their kids to be learning and experiencing in high school, those kind of things.
Thank you.
Director Newman?
Have we talked at all about converting our existing high schools into separate Magnet High Schools? Rather than, and maybe my understanding isn't all the way there, but having a separate Magnet High School?
So we have not had that discussion. There are some complexities that come with that, that would, there would probably be a lot, some barriers that we might have. Some of that is within our current structure, K8, what we do is we offer, when a school becomes a Magnet School, if there are current students enrolled in that school who do not want to be in a Magnet Program, we allow them to go to another school and so that we can lottery students into the school, but that also comes with transportation, some other things. Because our three comprehensive high schools and Metro has those same opportunities have very similar, I guess, access now to programming. It's interesting, we have a menu of options and I just learned this today, we have Chinese at Kennedy and we have Russian, for example, as a world language at Washington. But those are the only two schools that offer those languages. But we would allow a Washington student to attend Kennedy for Chinese or a Kennedy student to attend Washington for Russian. So those options are really there and Magnet's about a thematic usually idea, like this is a community idea. So there would be just a lot more complexities in those comprehensive high schools to make them Magnet than we would have to think through what that would look like.
It strikes me as an opportunity to create some movement across the district, not saying, oh, well, I don't want to go to that Magnet School. I want to go to this Magnet School, but almost decoupling from that, you know, you, you're a member of the high school that you're in the district, but maybe you do take Russian at Washington or you take Chinese at Kennedy. So I think there's some interesting opportunities to explore that and I hope we haven't, I hope we haven't dismissed that idea entirely.
Districts that have high school magnets, usually it's with a, some sort of emphasis. So Adam could probably speak to this further, but in Houston, for example, they have a Magnet Program and there's a, a health, health professions Magnet School, a performing arts Magnet School, a computer science Magnet School. So usually there's a theme to that, so.
Director Humbles?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the goals that you had on that, the sheet and it says attract more diverse populations and counteract, I believe this is reputations and preconceived opinions. What have you put in place to attract more of a diverse population or kind of what are you thinking?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think our focus has been, what does it look like when a high school can be hyper personalized and customized? So that any, any learner, any family could see their, their son or daughter excelling in this and getting what they need out of it. So I think that's kind of been our primary, primary piece. But yeah, the, how we, how we share it with our community and make sure that all different groups of students and families see that that's a place for them is going to be really important for us.
And I would think, I think I would speak to like the, the list of people that you had, the, the community that you put together, folks from the district and then from, from the community. To me, it was one of the more, most diverse groups that I had been part of. I think there was about 30 people in that, in that group and really coming from different, different perspectives. So I thought that was incorporating that in the work was important.
And I think when we think about our current Magnet Schools in K8, the theory is that the theme will attract a diverse set of, of families. This is a continued area of improvement for us that I am really excited about the grant application to help us, help us think about research and then get our minds around how we actually do that more successfully because it's a huge opportunity for us that we've got to get better at.
Director Garlock?
Executive Director Pickering, just I want to follow up on your hypothetical student who is interested in becoming an electrician. And you said that coursework would be tailored to that career choice, which, which is wonderful. But the flip side of that coin is that in ninth and 10th grade typically, the courses are more general in terms of, speaking of science, how do we make sure that those students are getting the required biology, the required earth science? If we're tailoring coursework to physics?
Yeah, yeah, great question. Yeah. The concentrations, I think, as we talked as a team, would really be more for juniors and seniors once they started getting a better sense, if they had a sense of where they wanted to go. It would look different at freshmen and sophomore, a lot more of those learning discoveries, explorations into different fields. And it's going to require a lot of. And it's going to require a lot of, you know, teacher advisors and students to making sure that if I'm a science avoider, that I'm still taking learning discoveries and getting my science so I don't end up in a hole at the end. So I think it's going to be a, definitely a relationship base and helping kids understand, you know, dip your toe in all these things and find out what interests you before you go deep on something.
Director Bourgner?
Yeah, I was just wondering if there's still going to be an opportunity for concurrent enrollment so that students, if they're, for certifications, if they're in CTE concentrations or concurrent enrollment for college credit if they're, if they're aligning towards a college post-graduation course.
Yeah, we haven't talked about that specifically, but I would certainly believe that's a part of that concentration. Young person was going to go be a nurse practitioner or whatever, that would definitely be in the, in their mix to get them out to Kirkwood, get them started.
Director Mershaw?
Just wondering, I think I saw something about ESER funds potentially being used to get this off the ground. What's the cost now? And then you're talking about a grant for, I don't know if the grant is a permanent thing. It said it was five years on there. What's the cost and how do we pay for it long-term?
So, great question. We don't have all the costing figured out yet because we're still developing what the program's going to look like, but I think we'll have that soon. But we've put aside a large sum of ESER just so we can create and develop this out for the three years and what that looks like. So I think more to come on that. We'll have that developed, I think, more soon.
How much large sum of ESER?
Million. It'd be a million per year.
How much would it cost for the next five years to pay a pair of educators $15 an hour?
So the, so we can't use ESER funds for that. We cannot use ESER funds for salaries. We can create positions that pay people, but we cannot pay that, it doesn't go towards salary schedules. It has to go towards recovery of learning. And certainly we can pay staff for recovery of learning. One of the pieces that was encouraged through the Department of Education was thinking about not just remediation, but also acceleration and innovation. And as our data tells us right now with credits, definitely the years of transitions, our students who went from fifth grade to sixth grade, well, we know kids who entered kindergarten in first grade, fifth grade to sixth grade, and then as well as eighth grade to ninth grade. Those have been really hard transitions for our kids. So as we thought about recovery of learning for this particular group of students, this seemed to be an opportunity for us to get our community engaged. And also our data tells us our ninth graders do, and 10th graders do not have as many opportunities as our juniors and seniors do. Speaking of concurrent credit, job shadows, a lot of that is for our upperclassmen as well as Iowa Big is really catered more towards our upperclassmen. So the ESER dollar allocation is to recover learning, but also doing that through an innovative practice as well as how do we accelerate learning? So that was the emphasis. And we can't use ESER dollars for salary schedules, but we can absolutely pay employees. And that would be the bulk of this particular cost is to staff it. There would also be the opportunity though, if we had, we know that we have to start with an entry point. So this would not be a comprehensive high school. It would be a smaller group of students, not a, not, not certainly the size of, of our comprehensive high schools and probably not even the size of Metro High School. But a smaller group of students, which means you're starting with a smaller group of staff. The other piece is then we look at staff allocations as well. And that we may have to think about how do we pull from our current staffing to model this for folks who might be interested in doing this work.
I think there's a lot of tie-in to Iowa Big. We also talked about how does C.R.V.A. fit and what does that look like for remote and virtual instruction? Another really exciting piece of the magnet reset of the conversations is we're currently working on our guaranteed and viable curriculum within our system. And because you're a magnet school, you have a theme, but you can still do the pieces of the guaranteed and viable curriculum and link that instruction. It's just about picking those thematic units of what really excites me as a student and what excites me as a family of where I'm going to send my child. So I think there's those pieces as well that tie in to what our entire system is focused on.
Director Bourgner, did you have another question?
I was just going to point out, I think there is some ARPA money that's available, some granting opportunities there that's been designated towards education to kind of close disproportionate student access. So I would encourage you to look at the 155 pages of interim rule from the Department of Treasury. I can provide you with a copy.
I started digging in, so maybe you can help assist with narrowing that down.
With that, and then I was just wondering if there are any opportunities for teacher leadership and teacher leadership development through this programming?
I think there's always opportunities for teacher leadership and for teachers to grow and develop capacity. We've been talking about that through some of our NASAD evaluation committee, our teacher leadership committee. But this is also an innovative opportunity for staff to try something different, to expand in what their leadership skills look like. I believe all of us are leaders in some way, shape or form, but I just think there's a lot of opportunities. We haven't specifically talked about what does this look like again, because I don't feel like we have enough of the details. But the exciting piece is I think we will soon as we plan for students registering and how many people are interested in an opportunity like this one.
Just one comment, speaking about staffing, just, it's always a concern to me, staffing ratios. And when we're doing innovative projects, I think we perhaps have a tendency to, to change the staffing ratio a little bit to, to help the program succeed. Please keep in mind that that is a heavier load for all the other staff than that have to pick up that gap. So we all know that our staff is overworked right now. And, and I don't, I don't want to see that burden, a burden being shifted to some of our staff in order to support this program. I think it's a great program and worth investigating, but just, we need to be very careful about staffing.
Following up on the, well, first of all, on the design part that was on there, you know, it all sounds good. Shouldn't it just say, you know, we should have all those things for every high school student? It seems like to me, but I understand that's difficult to do. But on the team, were there any teachers on the team? It doesn't seem like it, but.
Yeah, teachers on the team and on our design team Friday, it was the bulk of our team was teachers.
Okay, this team that I just see listed right here is that?
Yeah, that was a community team trying to create a big, a big picture. We had two teachers on that group, I think. But yeah, Friday's group, which is where we roll up our sleeves and get to work, was dominated by teachers.
I would just say, from my perspective, we hear a lot from teachers, hear a lot in the community about the stress load, not just on teachers as workers, but workers in general and the people who work for us are primarily teachers. And so magnet schools are great. There's a lot of great ideas, but when you say $2 million for this magnet schools and we can't find subs and stuff like that for our staffing right now, it just is concerning for me.
Just a final comment. I appreciate the foresight of, of exploring these magnets years ago. As a parent in this district, my boys have both gone through magnet schools, up through McKinley, STEAM Academy. I volunteered in the leadership academies. I absolutely love the work that's happening in there. My oldest son went through Iowa Big and excited that we're exploring the opportunity to fill that gap with a nine, 10. Just appreciate the work that's been going on in this district for years. I really think that we're pushing forward with some innovative ideas that other people aren't willing to try. So I appreciate that coming from everyone. As we adjourn our meeting this evening, we'd like to close in a moment of silence to recognize one of our staff members. I'll turn the meeting over to Gary Hadfield, who is the principal at Taft Middle School.
Thank you again, Gary Hadfield, principal of Taft, President Tominsky and the rest of our Board of Education, our directors. I appreciate, appreciate you giving me the time. The Cedar Apps Community School District and the staff of Taft Middle School would like to recognize the passing of Tracy Parrott, a paraprofessional at Taft Middle School following a short illness with cancer. Tracy was a vital part of Taft as she worked tirelessly with our students. She gave all that she had to the kids in her care. She assisted them with being successful students. For perhaps more important, she assisted them in being better people. She provided them with an example of a successful and professional woman. She treated all students with respect and saw the inherent value in each one of them. She will be sorely missed at Taft. We will miss her friendship and smile, but more so, we will miss seeing the impact she made on students each day. Tracy enjoyed shopping, going to the casinos to play the slot machines, decorating her house and spending time with family and friends. She loved a good time and always was the life of the party. She never missed her children's activities and loved going to Friday Night Lights. I'd like to offer my condolences to her husband, Josh, her daughter Sydney, and her two sons, Eli and Evan. The Cedar Apps Community School District and Taft Middle School would like to thank Tracy for all that she brought to our school. We have a better place for children because of Tracy's time with us. At this moment, I'd just ask for a brief moment of silence in honor of Tracy. Thank you.
With no further business, we stand adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.